Twenty first, two thousand twenty five to order at seven P. M. We stand for the pledge of allegiance. Still missing the flag.
There it is.
Now we're counting. All right. The pledge will be to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Next up, we have public forum. Might have a few. First up is, just as a reminder, if you could try to limit your comments to three minutes, that would be great. The first up is Colleen Cunningham.
Thirty minutes?
Forty-five.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Colleen Cunningham, and I have two kiddos at the E. C. C. I just wanted to take a quick moment to thank the district for the really wonderful back-to-school fair last weekend. I was able to participate both as a parent and also to table with the Maplewood Community Fund. From my perspective with the community fund, I'm so grateful that M. R. H. is working proactively to build connections with the community. We're a new nonprofit, and we were explicitly invited, maybe twice, and I didn't respond the first time, and then given a warm welcome, clear instructions, and help getting our stuff in in the rain. So, thank you to Central Office for running such an organized event, such an organized event. And what a beautiful event it was. I felt the intentionality of serving our scholars as whole people. We fed them, we sparked joy. Hard to think of anything more joyful than dozens of kiddos with Maya's incredible face paint. We provided school supplies, we made connections to local organizations who can provide additional resources our scholars or their grownups might need. And of course, our loving M. R. H. administrators and staff were there to give hugs and high-fives and hype us up for another great year. I really felt our core value of belonging. I'm sure it's no easy feat to put on this event, so thank you to the tremendous work of the Central Office and all of our M. R. H. staff, parents, and volunteers who hosted such a lovely event. Thanks.
All right, next we have Betsy Cassina? 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 Okay.
Hello, all. I'm Betsy Cassina. I have a child at M. R. H. E. C. C. and one at the elementary. And I'm here tonight to express my strong support for Dr. Stansel and the inclusive leadership she brings to M. R. H. Early Childhood Center. Her expertise in special education helps create a school where every child, regardless of ability, feels seen, supported, and included. Her leadership is thoughtful, intentional, and rooted in what's best for children and families. I would especially like to thank her for leading a fair and transparent process with staff regarding the changes in looping grades, for communicating clearly and attentively with families. After teachers brought the idea of ending looping to Dr. Stansel, Dr. Stansel led a two-year process during which building leaders and teachers gathered feedback, analyzed data, and engaged in meaningful dialogue. By the end, eleven out of twelve teachers expressed a desire to end looping, and all twelve preferred to remain in their current grade levels. This approach was grounded in data, teacher input, and centered on student needs for what's best at the E. C. C. As part of this thoughtful process, in February, Dr. Stansel shared a detailed message with families explaining upcoming change. During parent-teacher conferences the following week, first-grade teachers gathered parent questions. A week later, Dr. Stansel, Dr. Ricker, and several teachers released a video F. A. Q. to answer those questions and to continue the conversation. In the video, teachers affirmed that this decision is what's best for both students and educators, and I'm deeply grateful for this process that puts our children and families at the center. I also appreciate how this process kept in mind the teachers' ability to still fully engage with a Reggio-inspired school as studio approach. Importantly, it lightens teachers' workloads, addressing a concern raised repeatedly in the Stay Exit Survey, and it helps make their roles more sustainable. I ask the board to continue vocal support for Dr. Stansel. As she moves this important work forward, our children will continue to thrive in the kind of inclusive and equitable environment she's helping to build at M. R. H. E. C.
Thank you. We have Rachel Lindsay.
Good evening from the E. C. C. to the high school. I'm Rachel Lindsay. I have two kids in the high school, both of whom have been students at M. R. H. since preschool. I've been doing a lot of reflecting this past summer as my youngest matriculates to ninth grade, and my oldest begins her last two years as a Blue Devil. As a single parent, I've relied probably more than my fair share on the excellence and goodness of teachers and administrators at every level, who have invested their time and talent in nurturing my kids as humans, not mere data points on assessment reports, amid a complex, confusing, and increasingly challenging time for educators. I don't always remember teachers' names; there have been so many over the years, but I'll never forget how Ms. Reeseide and Ms. Sossell sparked curiosity and wonder in their kindergarten classes at the E. C. C., how Ms. Howard and Ms. Williams and Mr. Matt met them where they were as angsty tweens in upper elementary, how Ms. Garcia built confidence in Will, one of my kids, throughout her many years of speech therapy, how Mr. Zitzer cried at middle school promotion because he was deeply connected with all of his students, or how Principal Huffman, in her first year, created new opportunities for student leadership with real-world impacts at high school. I've also seen how U. D. Dr. Jamison show up for students and teachers, advocating for excellence, navigating challenges, seeking data-driven solutions, even amidst opposition that would thwart lesser administrators from doing the right thing. Last year, we faced the decision of whether to stay here or to relocate. In the end, there was no question, in part because this is our home, the place where my kids feel safe, seen, and supported, not by accident, but because of decisions and values that have prioritized learning and wellness for all students. I don't think my experiences are unique. Many of us started at M. R. H. as a circumstance of location and have stayed with M. R. H. because it became home. Our district isn't perfect. Many of the teachers I mentioned just a moment ago are no longer in our schools, and of course, we have welcomed many new excellent teachers in the past decade. The Stay Exit Survey that you have received tells multiple stories, some of them encouraging, some of them are pleased for attention, and some, I would argue, are fire alarms. There are cracks in the foundation that we, the board, students, teachers, taxpayers, neighbors, and others need to prioritize and not politicize this year. Recruiting and retaining excellent teachers who serve all students, teachers with life experiences that match and expand those of our kids, teachers who are integral parts of our community and not mere district employees, is no doubt a common goal among this body today. I'm looking forward to your deliberations and actions tonight and into this new school year, and I hope you do the right thing by putting our kids first at every step. Thank you.
All right, next we have Jennifer Moore.
Hello. Longtime listener, first-time caller. I have to tell you that I listen to all the school board meetings, and the sound is really bad, so I'm going to try to project as well as I can for those out there doing their best. Good evening. My name is Jennifer Moore. I'm a parent of a senior and a third grader. I'd like to start by celebrating the child-centered support Dr. Jamison, Dr. Dietrich, Justin Harachik, Principal Huffman, and Vince Estrada have shown my son Ralph. I would also like to celebrate Dr. Stansel and Ms. Holliday for their amazing support of my son Theo. I have to say, the second-grade talent show has been the highlight of two thousand twenty-five so far for us. So, raising whole children is not an easy thing, especially right now, and I really appreciate the support of the M. R. H. Village. I've been meditating in my own work. I just did a retreat with my team and thinking about what good leadership looks like. And as we start this new year, I would like us all to just take a moment and think about what rich, rewarding, effective leadership means. For me, it looks like empowerment to work with cohesive autonomy. It's working toward a shared vision through the provision of infrastructure and a highly supportive environment. It's asking our teams and colleagues what they need, including them in the design of our work, and taking their feedback seriously. I encourage each one of us to show up as real people who operate with good intent, generosity of spirit, curiosity, and open-mindedness to understanding systems and our parts in them. In meetings such as this, expressing appreciative body language can demonstrate our genuine commitment to work together and build trust. I've watched every board meeting over the last year, and I have witnessed the poise, deep expertise, and commitment displayed by our superintendent, only to be interrupted, second-guessed, pointed at, and dismissed by some of our board members. I listened to a very interesting interview this week with Ruha Benjamin, and she said, "I always ask myself, who does my pessimism serve?" I think that's a good practice, and we should all think about that. I hope we can go forth and all of us work to embody the M. R. H. mission and vision so that we can work for our district together.
Next, we have Nick Homa.
Good evening. Nick Homa, three-five-two-five Commonwealth Avenue. Good to see you all again. It's been a couple months hiatus for me, so I'm glad to be back. Good evening to the administration, teachers, and staff in the M. R. H. community. I'm here tonight to talk about a couple of items. First, I want to talk about how cool it is to be a part of this M. R. H. community on the Back-to-School Week. At orientation last week, my third-grader Finn, he ran straight to Principal Elam and jumped into her arms, and she wrapped him up in the biggest, tightest hug, and they embraced for several seconds, and it warmed my heart to see that. It also puts my mind at ease to know that, and constantly be reminded, that our teachers and building leaders have what is best for our children at the forefront. My seventh-grader Declan, he still daps up Mr. Cleve when we see him at Schnucks or we have occasion to go to the E. C. C., and this is a full eight years after Declan had Mr. Cleve and Ms. Sally for his home space. And I want to applaud Mr. Zitzer's detailed emails and calm, patient demeanor, which helped my seventh grader navigate the first day, first anxious day of seventh grade, I think, helped many navigate that first day. Our M. R. H. leaders, whether they're building administrators, teachers, staff, or coaches, they leave an indelible imprint on our kids. They are our most valuable resource, and we are continually fortunate to have them teaching and influencing our kids every day. Which leads to my second topic, which is a concern for our M. R. H. building leaders, teachers, and staff, particularly our Black building leaders, teachers, and staff. The social and political climate has been and currently is challenging, which might be the understatement of the year, and I'm concerned those challenges have come into the M. R. H. community as well. We still talk the talk. Our mission statement includes that we're an inclusive school district where staff, families, and community members are seen. We have a core value of belonging that lists that we develop relationships to create a culture of safety, trust, and openness, and we have a for-our-people goal that lists that we develop systems to support and inspire staff to reach their full potential. But are we walking the walk? Do our actions in the day-to-day back up these missions, values, and goals? Right now, it's easier than ever to have your equity lens be blurred. I'll remind you of the accolades the district earned in two thousand twenty-four. Four-hundred-seventy-first best school district in the U. S. out of over ten thousand, ninth-best school district, and twenty-third-most-ever school district in Missouri, seventh-best school district in the St. Louis area, and thirty-second-best place to teach in Missouri. These were earned accolades. Dr. Jamison made changes when she arrived, shook things up, so to speak, and change is almost always unwelcome and unpopular. We've seen and felt that tension play out in our community, but man, you really can't argue with those results. The accolades speak loudly, and they speak for themselves. I hope we can offer the same support and create the same psychological safety for our Black teachers, leaders, and staff that they create for our children. I hope we can celebrate and empower our Black leaders, teachers, and staff because we need them now more than ever, and they're a key component of the fabric of our school district that so many of us came here to join. As always, thank you for listening, and thank you for your service.
Next, we have Leslie. It's Coos.
It's Coys.
Coys. I'm sorry.
No worries.
I'll remember.
No worries. I am Leslie Coys. I have two kiddos. I have one at the elementary school and one up at the middle school. And I, on January twenty-third of two thousand twenty-five, I emailed the board to express my deep disappointment and concern regarding the conduct of certain board members during the January twenty-first special meeting. In that meeting, Mr. Colbert made a motion to enter a closed session to discuss legal and personnel matters explicitly excluding Dr. Jamison. Calling a closed session with just forty-eight hours' notice signals a matter of extreme urgency. Choosing to exclude the superintendent strongly implies the meeting was about her. Otherwise, she should have been included, as is standard when collaboratively leading the district. Dr. Jamison rightly asked, if the board and superintendent are working in partnership to lead the district, why would she be excluded from the discussion? This incident, I don't think, can be viewed in isolation. In June of two thousand twenty-three, a hundred and seventy-one community members signed a letter to the board requesting that Dr. Jamison's contract not be renewed. Effectively, that's calling for her to be fired. Among those signees were Mr. Colbert, Ms. Colvin, Mr. Matt, and Vice President Schmidt, our four newest board members. The highly unusual and concerning behavior during the January twenty-one meeting left me feeling afraid. I'm afraid for our leadership, for the stability of our district, and for our children. I do not want to lose our award-winning superintendent, or do I want to see the potential cascade of resignations, that cascade of resignations that could follow such a destabilizing loss? The motion to exclude Dr. Jamison demonstrated a serious lack of respect, both towards her and towards board members who were blindsided by a hastily caused meeting they were not even all available for. This episode was deeply unsettling. As a parent, I felt real fear, and I can only imagine the impact on M. R. H. employees. That fear likely still lingers among many of them, like it does for me. While the public can never know the full contents of an executive session, I was deeply disappointed that President Miller and Vice President Schmidt didn't, they did not issue a public statement acknowledging the harm done. There was no accountability, no recognition of the impact, and no assurance of a path forward to rebuild trust. This is not the example you should be setting. In my home and in M. R. H. classrooms, we teach that when harm is caused, we acknowledge it, we take responsibility, we apologize sincerely, and commit to doing better. Dr. Jamison models this approach exceptionally well. Her recent email to the community regarding transportation issues was a clear example of accountability, humility, and leadership. I urge the board to follow her lead, acting with transparency, humility, and a commitment to maintaining strong, respectful relationships with both staff and families. Thank you.
All right, next we have Eleanor Pardini.
Good evening. My name is Eleanor Pardini, and I have two children at the elementary school. I envision M. R. H. as a district where people are excited to come to work and proud to stay. The Board of Education plays a critical role in shaping belonging and employee retention. I remember that board members Colbert, Schmidt, Colvin, and Matt signed a letter in June of twenty-three that urged the sitting board to oust our superintendent. Our employees remember this. Your words, tone, and body language at meetings are closely watched. They can either build trust or sow fear and hostility. An adversarial tone toward our leadership contributes to an atmosphere of fear that risks driving away our talented educators. I am concerned about the constant questioning directed at Dr. Jamison and other leaders that feels antagonistic, combative, and obstructionist. A recent example of this is the discussion around the proposed A. I. use policy at the last meeting. What should have been a straightforward conversation became needlessly contentious. This policy is proactive and responsible, and something we now expect in educational settings. As stated in the document, it allows the district to begin planning, designate a coordinator, provide staff training, and communicate with families. M. S. B. A. and DESI recommend an A. I. use plan, and our own educators are well-equipped to lead the work. Yet, the discussion focused on perceived problems that either weren't there or could have been quickly resolved. Ms. Schmidt and Mr. Miller questioned the need for an A. I. specific policy, though it's now standard to have distinct policies for academic integrity, instructional technology, and A. I. Ms. Colvin fixated on autocorrect rather than engaging substantively. Mr. Colbert called the policy premature, even while acknowledging A. I. is already in use, and suggested we don't know enough about A. I. yet to create a use plan. It is entirely knowable and feasible right now to teach students how to use A. I. effectively and ethically, and to assure staff know how to teach well and protect student data. You don't need to be A. I. experts; our professional staff are. Instead of amending the phrase about termination and moving forward, the board tabled the policy with no timeline for return. The delay feels like obstruction for its own sake, wasting time, demoralizing staff, and ultimately failing our children. Our Stay Exit Survey indicates our staff of color don't always feel welcome or safe. Our Culture Climate Survey indicates our support staff don't feel valued. Your behavior contributes directly to whether we retain or lose great employees. If staff feel disrespected, undervalued, or unsupported, they might leave. If we lose our award-winning superintendent or other employees, it is our children who will suffer. I urge you to ask meaningful questions, but respect the procedural work that lies in the scope of work of our professional staff. I urge you to speak respectfully and to visibly support our leaders and our support staff. The future of M. R. H. depends on creating a working environment where our employees feel valued and want to stay, and you hold partial responsibility there.
Ann Louise Schmidt.
Hi, y'all. I'm Ann Louise Schmidt, parent of a senior and a junior at the high school. I've also lived in Maplewood twenty-three years. My kids have only known this district always, which is kind of cool. I'm going to tell you a story in a minute, too. My daughter, she's been working at the pool in the Heights, checking people in at the desk, and she has people say, "Oh, look at you, you're grown. I remember when you were itty-bitty." And I cannot tell you how valuable that is for an adopted kid, too. Now, don't y'all embarrass her tomorrow, but really, I mean, it's just valuable to have this tight community. We need it. I want M. R. H. to be a place where all children, families, and employees feel welcome and a sense of belonging. My kids are Black, and one of the things I dream of for M. R. H. is that kids who look like mine would not feel out of place because they would look around and not only see peers who look like them, but staff and teachers who look like them. This has not been the experience of my children, but I still hope for this for our future children and for this district. And I've just kind of started watching board meetings lately. I had Mama Phil and all kinds of drama, but I'm really wanting to, like, get into the community again. And so I've been watching, and I'm excited to hear tonight about the results from the surveys that have been, that are going to be reported tonight. I, too, have been concerned by discussion around support staff and administrative leaders raised during last year's discussion of the budget. At the November two thousand twenty-four meeting, then Brian Matts asked to modify a statement such that salary increases would be prioritized for certified staff over support staff or administrative staff. Discussion continued at a December work session, where it was pointed out that the salary for our administrators falls in between the minimum and first quartile in almost every position across the district. I am sure that this kind of discussion from board members makes our support staff and our administrative leaders feel undervalued and threatened. I do not support enshrining inequity in the budget. These employees can opt to leave a hostile M. R. H. and get paid more almost anywhere in the region. We want and we need our staff to feel valued and to want to stay at M. R. H. Our survey indicates that the most important areas for improvement for employees in our district is for our support staff to feel valued. I would like to see you give staff equitable pay raises. I don't want to hear that we can't afford it because we are overdue for a tax increase, and I am ready to pay my fair share to invest in our children by compensating all of our employees, including our support staff and our leaders, with what they are worth and what they deserve. Are you ready to keep our kids at the center by retaining the talented employees we currently have here at M. R. H.?
All right, last but not least, we have Gina LaRose.
I'm the last one. It's going to be hard to follow some of those folks. My name is Gina LaRose. I have three children in the district. I have one in the junior high and two at the elementary school. We have been here since two thousand twenty-fourteen, which is making me feel very old. I come from a long line of public educators. I am married to a public school teacher, and I myself am a product of public schools. When my partner and I started thinking about what, about where we would live and how we would educate our children, sending our kids to public schools aligned with our values and was important to both of us. For that reason, we consider ourselves extremely fortunate to be here in the Maplewood-Richmond Heights District. In a time where lawmakers are determined to defund public schools, I understand the difficulty that is being tasked for doing more with less. I am grateful that the Maplewood-Richmond Heights School District has not only survived but also thrived in this climate. Maplewood-Richmond Heights successes have been recognized on many levels. Mr. Homa listed a few. Niche Springs is in the top ten districts in the state, and last December, the Post Dispatch acknowledged that we were one of the only districts in the region to rebound from the disruptive impact of the pandemic. It would be a mistake to acknowledge these achievements without also recognizing the role of strong leadership. Dr. Jamison has proven herself time and again to be a competent and capable leader. We are lucky to have her. Dr. Jamison signs almost, oh, sorry, I skipped a paragraph. Obviously, our district is not perfect, all right? There will always be areas in need of improvement, and I see Dr. Jamison actively looking for those areas, responding to them, and striving to address and correct all the issues. Dr. Jamison signs most of her emails with the words "in partnership," and from my vantage point, this is the foundation of her leadership style. She makes herself extremely accessible to students and grownups in our community. Being present and engaged at nearly all school and community events, I honestly don't know how she does it. She is known to invite stakeholders in our community to partner with her in solving problems or challenges that arise, and that is the sort of leadership that I appreciate. It is my hope that we will continue to trust in her leadership and support what she and others need to continue to foster the edge- to continue to foster the educational and real-life successes of all MRH students. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, everyone. We always appreciate it when you exercise your right to use our public forums, so thank you for sharing your thoughts with us. Now, we will move on to recognitions. The first one we have is a very special one for our fellow board member Katie Hoffman. All right. So Katie has earned, she's achieved her Advanced Board Member Certification from the Missouri School Boards Association. In order to do this, she had to, in addition to the 18 and 1/2 hours we all have to go through, she has done at least 30 training credits, completed an annual refresher training requirement through MSBA, read two books related to school board service, attended at least two MSBA regional or statewide events, and she has written an essay relating to her study to board service. And so that is a huge undertaking.
Thank you. I, you know, feel like we're part of setting the tone in the district for living on our strategic plan. We're a district of continuous improvement, and that means us, too. I've been on the board 11 years, but I still have much more to learn. So as part of nurturing our lifelong learners, I think we have to show that we're willing to do it, too. So I did all those things in addition to being here on the third Thursday of the month and would challenge my fellow board members to join me in that, in that.
Well, there's a special flag, too, so you can never forget how hard work you put in. All right. Next, we have some very special guests. In 2024-25 school year, there was the inaugural year of the Principal Advisory Leadership Board, and the first time we had a student liaison to the Board of Education. And so each year, we like to member the, welcome the members of the PAL board to our meeting. Next month, we will have our formal swearing-in of the members that will serve on the board. But right now, we'd like to bring you all up. I don't know if you have something planned or an introduction. Ms. Hoffman's gonna, I don't know. Oh, go to the podium.
Going up here or?
Yeah, to the podium.
Okay. Okay. So I think we're all, can I introduce yourself? My name is Beatrice Schmidt, and I'm a sophomore at MRH High School, and I'm part of the underclassman PAL board.
My name is Cara Thomas, and I'm a senior at the MRH High School.
My name is Janay Jones. I'm a senior at MRH High School.
My name is Valen Sutton, and I'm a junior at MRH High School.
Hello. My name is Maple Creya. I'm also a junior at the MRH High School.
I'm Emily Stone, and I'm a senior at the high school.
I'm Izzy Corrie. I'm also a senior.
Mine is Minta Reeves. I'm also a senior.
I'm Alex Booth. I'm a junior here at MRH.
Hi, I'm Gera Panthezis. I'm a senior. I'm going to speak fast here.
To kind of say a couple of words about what PAL is and what it does. So PAL stands for the Principal Advisory Leadership Board, and we work closely with Principal Huffman to prepare a monthly presentation to give to the Board of Education. In every presentation, we have an ask that is centered around a focus that we have for our month. That can be anything from curriculum to extracurriculars to safe and inspirational spaces, which were some of ours last year. Before we present to the board every month, we meet with PAL boards from all of the schools. That means the ECC, the elementary, and the middle school, as well as our own underclassman PAL board, which is made up of freshmen and sophomores, so we can get their input and get their answers to some questions that we have, so we can provide a complete report to the board every month. And finally, each member of the high school board, the juniors and seniors, is a, going to be a voting member on one of the five committees, which are Health, Resources, People, Students, and Community. That means that every committee, as well as the board, has their own student voice, so we can accurately represent the student body. And we are so excited to work with the school board this year to make MRH an even better place for our students. Thank you so much.
I did want to know, I just wanted to bring up at least two things that you guys brought to us last year. So two of the things I recall that they brought to us, furniture. That has, we have put in our budget for a million, million, 1.2 in furniture. And I know we had staff go up to Steelcase in Wisconsin and that they are going to be including you all to help them pick out the furniture. I think some people are going to go to the thing. So thank you for bringing that critical issue to us, and we were excited that we could get the community to help us pass the bond so we could have enough money to replace furniture. And then the other one you guys brought, and I think we've also incorporated right in the budget, and Mr. Davenport has worked really hard as to find a, a, oh, gosh. Thank you, trainer, middle-aged, an athletic trainer for our events. And so we can host events, and we have, you have to have a trainer. So those are just two of, two of the many highlights of what they brought to us last year that we were able to incorporate. So thank you, and we look forward to all the great things you're going to bring us this year. All right. Next, we have consent agenda. May I get a motion?
Move to amend the consent agenda. I'd like to pull out the transportation collaboration agreement for discussion.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of moving, amending the agenda to move transportation out? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Okay. So we will move that to study? Talk about it there? Okay.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. And then we are on study items. The first study item is a new agreement with Highlight.
So I'm excited to bring this new item to the board, and actually, it was in consent agenda. And through our conversation, Jenny asked for this item to be pulled out. So as was previously stated, one of our goals for our people is related to increasing culture for staff. And looking at the survey data that has been provided, noted stay/exit survey data, data that is included from our NEA, from the surveys that they actually distribute, as well as district surveys, including post checks that are completed in all of the schools with teachers. And what was clear when that data was actually triangulated is that more effort needed to be placed in staff recognition and to increase the efforts and being able to see who's being recognized and not. So the item Highlight that's bringing forward is a platform that recognizes staff district-wide, both vertically and horizontally. This could be for support staff, bus drivers, teachers, district administrators, and all of the staff members can highlight another staff member. It also has a reward component to it where through the partnerships that we have, whether it's gift cards from QT or other contributions that are made by our partners, a staff member who receives so many accolades can select one of the items from the list. Currently, Highlight is in 12 states. The closest state is Illinois. For us, we would be the first state in Missouri to actually have this system in place. What I like most about the system is that it has data. For me, it's beneficial because I can monitor when principals are giving accolades and shout-outs to their staff. But it also allows me to see when district staff are actually giving accolades to principals and so forth. The other component which was mentioned throughout is the alignment to our core values. So instead of a staff member giving a shout-out that someone did a great job, it has to be tied to one of our core values of belonging, integrity, inspiration, courage, or success, which makes it easier for us to see what that looks like. The current cost for this year for year one is $2,500. I am very good at making asks, so now I'm considered a thought partner with the organization, which reduced the cost for us for this upcoming school year. And the asks for the next school year will be the same. If they are unwilling to provide this as a part of our partnership, if we continue with Highlight, the cost would be $4,000, $4,500 for consecutive years. But the current cost that's bringing brought forward to the board is $2,500. At this time, I welcome any questions that the board may have regarding Highlight.
Have any questions?
So, yeah, I have a question. What system do we use now to track these, I guess, celebrations or staff acknowledgements?
Outside of our Teacher and Support Staff of the Year, it really is based on what individual schools do. So I'll give you an example. For our cabinet meetings or COA meetings, we have shout-outs and celebrations included. So we hear those celebrations, and if a member of the team or their cabinet member hears one of their direct reports, they typically will write a note. I write notes, send emails, things of that nature. But there is nothing in place currently to track whether or not individuals are getting highlights. So I'll give you an example. Today, I was in the building. I will not name the building. And I came back to the office, and I saw some amazing lessons and the ability for a staff member to get students to think critically. And I was like, that's a great shout-out to give to that teacher. And I specifically noted how Highlight would not only allow the teacher to see the shout-out, but it allows everybody in the district to see it, which generates conversation. And when Laney Thompson and Courtney and a couple of our staff members from the elementary school were here doing curriculum writing over the summer, I did ask them like their thoughts about it. And they said currently, there's not a system in place for them to give each other shout-outs. And so that broadens the impact of individuals being recognized outside of the individual one-on-ones and then elevates the need to actually celebrate those staff members. So currently, there's nothing as systematic. I love this because it allows me to see that we are shouting people out for their development of sense of belonging for staff members. But if we're talking about integrity or success, you can really see where those functions are and be able to make adjustments for that.
So this requires, so you send an email to the teacher, shouting them out, say, and then you also have to go into the system and put this? Or is sending the email somehow, also, you can also like somehow forward that email to the system?
So the current system, depending on what either my direct reports or what principals do, it really varies. So some write Post-it notes. For me, I do all sorts of things. I sprinkle people. It just depends on the person's approach. This system does both. So you can, it's an app. You can put the app and put the information in. The app automatically generates an email to the person to let them know that they have been highlighted, and they can see it. Their colleagues can see it. And then we actually can aggregate and disaggregate data by building, and then also from the district level, too. So this is a little bit more sophisticated, but it allows for me to see how people are being celebrated, which is something that was evident in the data in all of the surveys. So for me, when I'm looking at the varying survey data, it's, is this actually showing up in multiple surveys? Which for me demonstrates that there is a need for us to continue to do the work around recognition.
Does this extend to non-employees? The, 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 or would they be interacting with like an admin?
That's a great question. Can I ask that question and get back to you?
You said that in, in our communities, I was curious about that.
That is true. Right now, the way that it's set up, it's usually internal staff, but that doesn't mean that it can't be external. So I can ask and see. They do take feedback, and I think one of the reasons why they gave us the discount is because I'm willing to serve as a thought partner in helping them to see that there is a way to grow their platform, and that could be a way to do that. So I can ask and get back to the board.
One other question. Is this automatically renewable? Or will we, will this come before us again next August?
We, we could bring it back, so it's not an automatic renewal. It's our first, an idea shared with the vendor that the goal is to track usage and look at the analytics. And if staff aren't using it, or if we see that there are gaps, we can say it's not beneficial for the community. So that's one of the things that we'll be tracking over the year.
Great. I think it's a great idea, and thanks for checking to see if we can get it at a discounted price.
All right. Nope. All right. Thank you. All right. Next, we have Board Policy Batch 2025C.
All right. So I have before the board today, Policy Batch 2025C. And this policy batch from MSBA includes seven new policies for the board as a result of either past House bills. So I'll go through each of those policies. The quick guide that was created is a way for the board to be able to see a snapshot of the policies and not read them all. So the first policy that I'll bring forward is Policy BBBA. This policy is a result of House Bill 199, and it includes an additional requirement for board candidates. And basically, the modification to this policy is that a board member or someone interested in becoming a board member cannot be convicted or entered into a guilty plea for an offensive assault or first or second degree under the RSMO code. So that's Policy BBBA. Are there any questions about this particular policy?
Okay. Perfect.
I wasn't there before.
The next policy is IGCD. This also is a policy that's been updated to ensure that students who are enrolled in virtual, virtual courses get due process. It's related to disciplines. So oftentimes, if a student is placed in a virtual classroom, you have to still give students due process. This was not previously included in this particular policy, so it is an addition that will be brought forward. The next policy is Policy IGD. I do want to publicly express that I am not in agreement with this particular policy, and it is required because of Senate Bill 39. I find this policy to be extremely harmful to our students and our community, and it does not align with our district equity resolution and the work that we do to support our LGBTQIA community.
Before you say what it says here, because I just, I cannot even abide by us repeating the anti-trans language that is in this policy. We will follow applicable laws, and I think that is all we need to say. I believe the green or the gray text at the top of the MSBA write-up says, "We will follow all applicable law." Period. And hopefully, when this sun sets in 2027. We never have to talk about it again.
All right. I will not be reading what's there.
Agreed. Agreed. I, I agree. Not, I don't, I think you will find none of us want to do this, so we can move on. We're, have to do that, unfortunately.
Policy JFCD. This is a new policy to comply as well, and it's prohibiting cellphone usage. Just to remind community, and the board, we do currently have a policy. That particular policy is under JG, and I believe the regulation for that, that outlines what that policy is, already prohibits. But this actually is a little bit more extensive, and it does include exceptions for cellphone use if it's actually required in a student's IEP 504 or their health plan. Shout-out to Ed Rich, as well as the high school Ms. Huffman-engaged students in regards to this particular piece to give voice, and staff have been asking for this for quite a while. And so, so far, we've only had to confiscate five cellphones, so we are tracking that piece, too. Students do push boundaries, but this is a policy that also is required. The next policy is IGBI. This also is a result of Senate Bill 63, and it removes the responsibility for the school district to receive a declaration of homeschooling from families. The only modification that the district is requesting is to codify compliance by saying, "We will respond in seven business days," to remove the subjectivity of the current language that's included in the policy. The last two policies are closely aligned. It's policy IGCD-A. This particular policy, again, is a result of Senate Bill 63, which had a lot of items in it. And it really separates the language between homeschooling and what is now being called family-based education. That's the educational program where families actually can be reimbursed for homeschooling their kids. And this policy requires us to allow students to participate in any co-curricular activities. And then the last policy is IGD-A-A, again, under Senate Bill 63. This one is very similar to the previous policy, but it says that we have to allow students who are participating to participate in district activities. And so examples of district activities would be spelling bees, prom, homecoming, debate and speech, summer school, any field trips, anything that is not directly tied to daily content or academics. And that one is a more interesting one as it relates to like speech and debate, which is also Misha-sponsored. So to date, we have not received any requests for our homeschool students to participate, but those are the policies that are being brought forward to the board. are the policies that are being brought forward to the board with changes as recommended by the board, if there are any changes for any of these.
I just had one question about the cellphone policy. And it just had to do with like the, the, I'm really struggling tonight with words, the consequences. Because as I noted, you know, the, the email we got from the school had sort of this cascade. And then it says, if you get to the last one, it refers you to Policy JG, or is it JG? Okay. And so I just wanted to confirm, under JG, you would be falling under violation, using, displaying or turning on pagers. That must be an old one, phones or personal digital assistants. And so I guess my question is, when you go through those, you've already had your phone. Is, is the last defense that Ms. Huff, like the school could do is take it away?
So it depends. And that's one of the changes that we definitely need to look at. So our discipline handbook is very great. And in essence, you technically, by the policy, could actually suspend a student. But the high school actually worked on a cascade of consequences prior to getting to. So for example, if you have a student that has repeated violations, which is included there, then, or if they refuse to provide their phone after requested, it's considered insubordination. Again, that's one of the things that we need to continue to work on is to streamline what's there, because it's very difficult to have consistency.
Right. And I guess that's my question. It's not with the consequence. I appreciate there is a lesser step than a suspension for your first offense. But I guess my question is how it then works together with the policy and that we're making sure like we are, they, they work together and like by using the cascade, we're not then, if it gets to the point where you have to use the policy, someone could be like, "Well, you didn't follow the policy." Do you see what I mean? Like, and so that's my question, which maybe-
So typically, when we think about supports in classrooms, you have office and classroom managed behavior that may not necessarily, so those first couple steps-
So then the policy wouldn't apply in that sense?
Well, it wouldn't in the sense that the teacher would be implementing, saying, given redirections if a student puts it out, or if it actually has to be confiscated. It's repeated violations where students are being insubordinate, which would then align to the regulation that outlines the consequence, which again, is so broad, because if you don't have consistency, one school, the middle school may say, "You get a one day suspension." And the high school may say, "Five." So that's something we need to actually work on to ensure that there is consistency with the application. Yes.
Cool. Thank you. That was my, that was my only question. Does anyone else have any questions about any of the policies?
So can you talk a little bit about the, the exceptions for educational use and how that, it, it, how do they, how do teachers balance the consistency across teachers and across the school with exceptions for educational use? And I realize it's like, what is it? But where are you guys seeing it going so far?
So Emily, our Director for Special Education, was a part of that conversation. So when we say technology, we're talking about cell phones, smart watches. And it actually has to be included in their IEP 504 health plan, which means that a doctor would actually have to submit something saying that it is needed. And then the case managers work to see if that's actually something that's needed to support the student. We do have students currently who have electronic devices that are used as a part of their IEP. I have not to date seen anything that is needed, but I'm not the expert. But the case managers would actually work alongside of Genia teachers to determine whether or not it's added.
If there, for example, a camera, if there was a need for a camera for a particular exercise, or something like that, which historically, it just, "Oh yeah, we have this device, so we can pull this technology in that the Chromebook might not have," or something like that. I was just curious how you're sort of seeing that balancing out as schools are starting to develop.
I think teachers are experts. I think we have amazing teachers who know what devices are needed. Like, for example, the policy says that they can't use personal devices. And the information that we sent out, we know that students use their own computers. And so allowing students to be able to do that, particularly those students who participate in speech and debate, Chromebooks are great, but they are not quite efficient for the work that's actually being done. But I believe that teachers are the experts. So if they need to pull out a camera for a lesson, they are able to actually do that and not have administration to dictate that for them, because we're not as close to the work and we don't know the alignment to the actual lesson that they're doing. And I would say that I haven't seen anybody use technology inappropriately from a classroom teacher's standpoint since, since I've been here for five years.
Yeah. And I've, my children have reported that that has been allowed in some instances, that in certain classes, you do use a phone or something more often. So that teachers are recognizing that would be for educational purpose. Yeah.
Well, if we're going to permit teachers to make that decision, then this policy will need to be updated, because this says, "The superintendent, principal, or designee may authorize student use of personal communication devices." So are all teachers by definition designees of the superintendent? Is that what you're, is that what this policy is saying? Otherwise, I think we should just modify it to add instructional, certificate to staff or whatever, however the language needs to be.
Yeah, I might prefer to ensure that the principal is looked in on that sort of thing, though. Just, you know, that like the principal makes the call and is aware, so that if it does become an issue with a parent saying, "Wait, I thought this was, that the principal can back it up."
Yeah, I think there's going to be, need to be some broader directive given to staff so they know what's inappropriate. Otherwise, yeah, I agree.
I can add language and bring it back for the second reading. If that's okay.
Anyone have any other questions about these? Nope. Okay. Next, we have Board Policy GBEA, workers' compensation.
Good evening, Board. I'm bringing the policy GBEA, which is workers' compensation. This policy is pulled out and separate from the other policies, just because there are a couple of decisions that you have to make at the end of this policy. So this policy is actually being presented for study. And the rationale, our current policy, GBA, the workers' compensation one, is a custom version. So there's a standard core policy that comes from MSBA. Local school districts can modify those policies should they choose. And this is a modified policy that we currently have in place. So the Missouri School Board Association Standard Language is the policy that I'm recommending in order to ensure consistency, legal compliance, and also alignment across related policies. Our current policy, GCBDA, which is for professional staff short-term leave, and GDBDA is support staff short-term leave, state that employees may not use PTO during a period when they receive workers' compensation benefits for work-related incidents. And so this policy, as it reads, is actually not in alignment with the other two policies that I mentioned. So currently, workers' compensation, individuals have an opportunity to earn sixty-six and two-thirds compensation that is non-tax through that workers' compensation benefit. But you have four options of what you can choose from. You can either, what is presented is the actual standard policy. So worker compensations, number one, have leave and PTO. They can maintain them as entirely separate benefits, which is what it's recommending. Under this approach, employees would be permitted to use PTO for leave, would not be permitted to use PTO for leave that is covered by workers' compensation pay. This is, this approach is outlined in the standard MSBA policy. And as noted above, for most employees, their take-home pay is not reduced while on leave, but it does impact retirement contributions. That's the first option. The second option is the district can allow employees to use their PTO to make up the difference in, in pay. So that one-third use of the PTO day for every day the worker is out on compensation leave. This would allow our higher-paid employees to avoid any reduction in their take-home pay amount. And also, it would allow employees to receive retirement contributions and credit on the portion of their pay, so that one-third. The third option is that the district can allow employees to use their PTO days in full without any payment of workers' compensation pay. Under this option, employees would receive their full salary, including their full retirement contributions and credit, in addition to their workers' compensation benefits. So that sixty-six and two-thirds non-tax, they would also receive that as well. Of course, this would probably have a detrimental impact on employees' motivation to return to work possibly, and it could, but they would be using up their PTO days as, as a result of that. And then that last option is the district can simply agree to pay the difference in the wages for all employees, or for just those employees whose average weekly salary wage exceeds the actual wage necessary to obtain the maximum total disability rate, so that TTD rate, which currently that amount is about eighteen hundred and forty-two dollars and six cents without the use of any PTO time. So those are the four options that currently exist. This is the standard policy from MSBA. You will see that the red part is what is redacted, that we are recommending to be moved, removed. And then the green part is the changes also that are recommended through MSBA. What questions might I be able to answer for you?
Could I just ask, oh, sorry. Go ahead, Josh.
Oh, I was gonna say that I think our current policy as far as use of PTO time, right now, in order to get more than three days out, you have to get prior approval. So it sounds like, just to address the issue as far as a deterrent, or I don't think if we chose policy, if we choose option three, I don't think that that really comes into play, because again, you're, if you're able to return to work, then you just need to prove the PTO. Like, you'd be, you know what I'm saying?
Well, and that's what, I had some basic questions about workers' comp that might be helpful for, for me in having this conversation. So if you qualify for workers' comp pay, does it mean that there was no fault on your part for what happened?
It's always going to be the fault. The, the whole purpose of, of workers' comp is that-
It's never, there's no, there's no mitigating factor for if you didn't follow the policy?
Yeah, because essentially what's happened is you've legislated your right-of-way just to your employer. And so it, it comes down to you're entitled to basically the big benefit is your, your medical dispay. Like, that's the biggest benefit. You also get compensation for the injury, but it boils down to like, if you ever want to get depressed, it's like, look at work comp scale. It's like, percentage of a man as a whole, and like, your body's a whole, and then it's reduced to a number of weeks, that's how much you're worth. You know, so it's, it's kind of crazy. But I think the, the issue, again, is that it's untaxable, right? So that, that recovery portion of it is taxable.
Correct. But to be held, assume you're paying thirty-three percent in taxes.
Whoa.
Right? If you're only, if you're only paid two-thirds of your pay.
Well, no, that's, that's what I'm saying. But that's-
Even if it's not taxable, I mean, that assumes you're a whole if you pay thirty-three percent in tax, right?
Well, I don't think that it's really taking into account the, the human element of the, the actual thing with people.
I think that goes to the argument of whether you're made whole, right? Like, if you're, if, if, or if you're, if you're, like, I believe some of the information said, like, lower-wage workers wouldn't suffer as much, but that assumes a lower-wage worker pays tax at a rate of thirty-three percent, which I'm going to guess they don't, because that would be an upper-wage worker that would pay a higher tax rate, right? Someone who makes a larger salary. So I, I don't know. I don't know if that's, but that would be my guess. So I'm just trying to understand. So I, I think part of the point, Dr. Ambrose Phillips, I think you put in, was that this does not happen a lot. So it's, it does not happen a lot. But when it does, my guess is, a lot of times, it could be a pretty serious injury, and someone could be out for a while. One thing you noted to us is that the employee does not lose their health insurance.
No.
Okay. So the problem would be if they have dependents or a spouse on their plan, that would be the, the problem with the health benefits part, because you cannot take money, they're not getting a paycheck from the district.
Correct.
So you can't deduct.
Correct.
Okay.
But they still, I mean, those-
It's covered by the district, but anything above the employee is what they would be paying through their deductions?
Correct. The employee's benefits are covered by the district, but they, if they actually have a family, family plan, they have a spouse, or they have children on their plan, they're paying for that. And that compensation, that comes from their compensation from their check. So if they're not earning a compensation, then therefore, they would have to actually make the difference for that payment in a different way.
There, there are other options. So I did have an opportunity when I was working with Dr. Ambrose Phillips and Megan around options for, because we don't want to harm staff. And so to the point, if they're not getting wages, there is an opportunity for them to actually direct pay. But there is also an opportunity for their salary to be reallocated, and then they pay a portion as a payroll deduction to continue the cost of the insurance, so that it's not such a heavy burden for them. So there are pieces, depending on what we do, that will have impact, the other pieces around insurance. But it's about how do we ensure that employees are still able to provide insurance for their children, but also not lose the piece around retirement. So they also can buy back their retirement time. I'm not sure the average time that they're actually, the staff members are actually off. I'm sure it depends.
It depends. It depends. We typically don't, there are more, I would say, and I can get that figure for the board. I know that there were several questions that you asked that I did answer. But the majority of individuals do not have long periods of time where they are off. We do tend to have more individuals who are from the support staff category that I, I would say that present with workers' compensation needs. Those individuals typically do not lose income, that sixty-six and two-thirds, because they're not necessarily taxed. And then those benefits for retirement is not coming out. They typically might actually be made whole, or probably a little bit more, depending upon the situation of what their, their actual pay is. And so, but they're not out for a long period of time. There are a couple of people who actually have longer leaves. And then there might be instances where maybe a staff member and, might be a multiple, like they've been on workers' compensation more than once. That is like personal confidential information. So if you would want to have access to that information, I could share that in executive session. But for the most part, most individuals do not stay out on workers' compensation for an indefinite period of time.
Sam, I'm sorry. One other question, I suppose, that, I mean, to me, it seems like one of the, the, the answer here is to give choices that might make the most sense for the person that's injured and give them the most flexibility. So I, I know that there are certain restraint or constraints about what we can and can't do. But I guess what I would be looking for is a solution where, you know, if somebody doesn't fit into category A, they've got B or C that might work better for them. That's, that's kind of what I would look for.
When I read this, not having the background of workers' comp, my reaction was, I feel, feels like we're taking benefits away. And so to your point, Josh, too, is just being able to better understand how this is not taking benefits away. As I, you know, as I saw the red lighting, it felt like all of a sudden they're losing access to various things. So it would be nice to just have a way to better articulate that it's not an[1697.21][1697.23]intention to take that away. Would be, this is a helpful conversation for me to better understand.
Well, I was saying, it's kind of, it's very complicated. And I think we've just gotten a lot of information, like in the last day or so, and not everyone's had time to digest it. So maybe it would be helpful for you all if we kind of share, like, our thoughts on like, in general, what we would like the policy. Like, I would like a teacher to be able, I mean, I saw, there was also a survey in here, right, of some other-
Yes. Those questions came, and I, I responded back to them that, that next day. And I know you probably haven't had an opportunity to go through all the questions and answers, because there were several questions that were posed. One of those questions asked about best practices. And so I share it with Missouri Law. State statute says is best practices, what MSBA is saying. And then I sent a link out to my colleagues for Human Resources and asked them to actually complete the survey. I have looked at most of the district's policies to see what they have adopted. And they're putting that information in there in real time. So you'll continue to see more school districts respond. So you can look at other school districts and see what they've adopted as well.
Yeah. And I appreciate that. I think that was helpful. And I think a lot of them had similar, like, in terms of the third they did, you know, and then varying on the others. So I don't know if it's helpful, or are people in general in favor of a policy? I, I don't know that the, I don't know, I'm not in favor of the MSBA recommended. I would love to find some combination. If Josh said, if there's like a cafeteria you can do, if that makes sense. I think we'll have to ask legal counsel.
I did actually have a conversation to see which one was least impactful. And after- And after hearing all of the, uh, recommendations, my recommendation to the board would be to allow staff to use, um, PTO for the third. And then the option that I think Loretta is asking for around insurance then provides flexibility. So if you're a family who can't pay upfront the amount of money that would be required for the insurance for family, there is an option where we break it up in small deposits or deductions from, checks can be done. So I think that's where you get the flexibility. We still need to work through the retirement piece. Uh, there is an option, I think, up to two years for, uh, staff to buy back that time, depending on the timeframe that they're out for retirement. So there really is not a lot that we can do as a district, because that's a requirement for staff. But I think the most equitable approach would be to allow staff to use the one-third or the third for PTO. I will say there will be some inequities for support staff, so I do wanna name that, because, um, they accrue days monthly, they're not given days upfront. And so that would actually be a difference there, that I think something we pulled out and highlighted, um, that we wanna pay attention to. So I, I think if we're talking about what's going to be best for staff, it would be to allow staff to use, uh, the third for PTO. Um, but I do, and would like to continue to track to see what the impact would be for support staff.
Well, and I thought I noticed in some of those districts, so maybe this is something we can explore, and I'm having, I have so many tabs over it, I can't find it, but where for support staff, the district pay, I mean, several districts paid the third, um, difference or something, I don't, I, I don't, I think it's just they mean they, I, I thought that was their response.
I think that they allowed the employee, no, I, I don't think, I, I, I'm not aware of a district that pays the third. I, either they adopted the standard MSBA policy, or Dr. Jameson and I have talked about, uh, allowing them to take a third of their PTO. I'm not aware of a district that pays the third.
Okay, it must be just how they phrase it.
Right, so.
Okay, here's the survey. But I saw there was some differentiation, at least in one district, that had to do with custo, maintenance, custodial, and transportation, uh, with respect to the first three days. I think it says, um.
The first three days are not covered under workers' comp, so you can use your PTO for those days. Um, and all districts do that. So even whatever you adopt, the first three days are not identified as workers' compensation, so they can use a full day of PTO for those days. It's good to have two attorneys on the board.
Yeah, no, and they said.
Especially Josh having a really strong, uh, understanding of workers' compensation benefits. But they can use, so, in any scenario, they would, they would be eligible to use that.
So I guess my point is if there's any solutions that can help with that inequity, that would be great, too, right? If we can find a way so that it, it doesn't create inequity for our support staff.
So legal gave us language to add to modify the policy, so I did wanna give them an opportunity for the board to actually hear what was available and to engage in discussion and conversation. Uh, what will happen, as we typically do, is make the changes, just like some of the other recommendations, um, that have been made, will come back, and, um, Kat works with the policy editor, and you'll see a revised version when those come back. And I'll make sure that those get out in enough time to be reviewed before the next meeting in September for that.
And so we also get, uh, feedback from, like, the leadership, like, the NEA, um, from, uh, process, and that kind of thing, out of meetings, right?
So we have a touch point that's scheduled for nine eleven, um, and actually I was waiting for a response from legal, so we had actually sent some emails, I didn't get the response from legal until today, so that's why the board got that a little bit delayed. So I was signaling to Rich McCollum that I would send him some of the language I saw him writing, trying to capture the notes. I'm like, I'll send it to you after, after the meeting, um, so that they can see it, and that'll be a conversation, um, that we'll have, um, just talking about the best approach. I think for me, um, allowing staff to be able to use time, but I think the tricky part is going to be from a, uh, standpoint of how we allow staff to be able to pay for insurance if needed. And then the other piece is, um, what does it look like for them to be able to buy their retirement time back? Um, and I don't have an answer for that right now, we're just now starting to have those conversations.
Because they're deducted from a paycheck, which they're not getting a paycheck, so that was, are they?
Correct, yes.
If you're getting the full third, the, getting the other third, theoretically you would have the funds to set aside to pay, pay it back, because it would have been deducted from your paycheck anyway. So that's why the third is important, the third is.
But I realize you have personally an MRH experience with somebody older, but I always think about the worst case, you know, being in healthcare, I've seen my first piece in there, it was, um, and actually I had a friend who was injured and had a prolonged, uh, um, issue around, um, their employment within school. So it's just one of those things that kind of part of my thought process as well, of, uh, trying to, uh, give enough, as much buffer as possible within the confines of various limitation data.
And I appreciate that, and I think that certainly is a shared concern. We have had some employees who, it's rare, but I, I don't want you to think that there has not been a single employee who's extended past the fourteen days. We certainly have had some individuals, um, but more often than not, they are able to return to work before the fourteen days.
Does anyone else have any questions?
Thank you for a long reason.
Yeah, thank you, because we had a lot of questions. Thank you. All right, are we on now? All right, next we have Board Policy Facilities Naming Rights.
So, uh, this particular policy is a new policy. Currently, the district does not have a, a facilities naming policy, um, within our policy manual, and the, uh, policy came forward because there was an ask around sponsorship for naming, uh, the football field, and I said, that's not sponsorship, it would actually be a, a naming policy. So, um, just, we received a couple of questions from the board regarding the difference between, um, sponsorship and facilities naming. And so, um, annual sponsorship is usually more short-term, it's renewed annually, the individuals, uh, pay the fee, and it allows, um, those entities to have marketing materials and things of that nature, and whether it's on the new scoreboard or in any of the handouts that we have. So, uh, this particular policy is broken down into two parts. It's, uh, new, uh, facilities, for example, this building would be a new facility, or it could be existing spaces, like the football field, um, for us to bring forth. And so, um, this policy outlines that the board would establish a committee, which would be a cross-section of our community, which includes community, student, staff. They would make a recommendation, um, for that particular naming, um, but if, for that, for facilities. Um, for the facilities naming is typically tied to a, a significant financial contribution, and is considered long-term, uh, with the exception of, um, a revocation clause, which this particular policy does not have, and that was one of the questions that, uh, came up. So I did reach out to legal to have some conversation about that. So it vaguely talks about the individuals who want to have their names placed on buildings to align with our values and, uh, consistent behaviors and our mission, um, and not be contrary to it, but it doesn't specifically say that. So, um, through that conversation with legal, we outlined a couple pieces that could be added that, um, allows us to be able to pull that back and then to include some additional pieces for that. So some of the items that include reputation and conduct, breach of agreements, so if they said that they were gonna pay a certain amount and we didn't get the funds, um, any legal requirements, so if there's a change in a law that we would actually have to remove a person's name. And then the last one would be if a facility is renovated outside of its current use, or if it's repurposed or demolished, and so we could then, uh, remove ourselves from that. So, um, that question prompted me to actually do some additional digging, so thank you for that.
Yeah.
Um, when it comes back, it will have that clause included, uh, because it is not currently there. Um, so again, this is coming for a first read, for study, and we'll come back with the recommended changes per the questions that were received for the board.
I think the only other question I had was, um, and maybe you have, are including this in your update, but if, it's like changing it's like an individual, like, the, the naming rights were limited to, okay, okay, it was an entity or an organization, but there could be.
Individuals.
Individuals, other people, so I think you were.
Yes, that's gonna be included in the policy that's brought back.
Perfect. Does anyone else have any questions? Nope, all right. All right, now we have new study item five, which was the, um, transportation collaboration agreement.
I'm assuming you have some questions?
Uh, yeah, I know that consistent bus drivers has been a challenge probably the whole time that I've been on the school board. Um, obviously COVID really exacerbated that, and we struggled. Um, we have used contracted bus drivers previously. Um, trying to understand, uh, if this is a good, you know, thing to be entering into when the product this week has not been one that I want to buy. Um, and so just would appreciate some conversation about, um, you know, what we've been considering. This is a challenge, obviously, it's ongoing, um, and what protections we have if we do decide to enter into this agreement, and if there's been any adjustments to this agreement based on, again, the poor performance from First Student this week.
Yeah, uh, so all very fair. Uh, we, uh, were in agreement with First Student last year. Uh, we were in contract with their Lindbergh, uh, depot. Um, I felt like when we were at that depot, our service, uh, we had two drivers out of there that were very dependable. They probably missed total between the two, five days all year. Um, extremely dependable, showed up every day, great relationships with our community. Uh, the Lindbergh depot did not have the stable of drivers this year to support us. Uh, we had a last-minute resignation, um, which, uh, really hurt us going into the school year. Um, so it took us from a need of two drivers to three drivers. Um, so, uh, I think that there can be some conversation. When I go back, First Student knows that I'm here tonight, they know that this is coming to the board. Um, I think that there's definitely some conversation that can be had. Uh, there is an out to the contract. Uh, last year, uh, and this year it's a ninety-day out, um, which, in reality, if we were to hire somebody who was not a, uh, did not have a CDL, uh, with a P endorsement, um, it's probably gonna take us sixty to ninety days to get them trained onto a bus. Um, so if we were able to find somebody, um, my suggestion would be we would provide notification right away. Um, the issue that we've had is that retention. Um, to be honest, we've hired several drivers, um, but when we're, I'm just gonna speak openly as their supervisor, when we hire them, we train them, and we're paying them twenty-eight dollars and ninety-nine cents an hour, and First Student is paying twenty-seven dollars an hour, starting. Um, you know, and we, we can sit here all day, and we have great benefits, right? Um, but when I talk to these people that are leaving, they're telling us, you know, it, it's great that you have great benefits, but I'm worried about putting food on the table, right? Um, and our benefits are great, but they're also very expensive benefits. Um, so, um, you know, I, I looked it up, uh, before I came, so right now the depot we are chartering out of is twenty-seven eighty-five, starting, coming in. If we hire a new custodian, and so we hire our custodians or a courier, and then we provide them a five-dollar bonus every hour that they're driving, we're making twenty dollars and ninety-nine cents. Um, so it's significantly below. I think I answered your question anymore.
Yeah, I, I think that is helpful. Um, we have to, we have to deal with that issue, uh, soon.
So, so I guess the question would be is if someone could provide an amount of what, what that would cost for us to pay a higher amount? Like, what the, what the difference would be, you know, in terms of an impact on our budget would be helpful.
We could actually do that, and I believe, um, share what surrounding districts are paying, so that you can get a snapshot, and then we could bring a recommendation to the board in regards to an increase, um, at the next meeting.
So what about the actual availability for candidate pool? Like, is, are there a lot of candidates, or is it, it doesn't seem like there are?
Not, not when, not when you're advertising a starting pay of twenty dollars, yeah. Uh, and so, so I have been calling around to other depots, like, prior to First Student, and saying, hey, what availability do you have? Um, there's only one other bus service that does, like, a rent-a-driver, um, similar to what we're doing with First Student. Um, they told us flat out they don't have the stable right now. Um, there's one other company that will, we've done business with in the past, um, but they want to rent us the driver and a bus, um, and it's significantly more. Um, this is the most cost-effective. Um, I put in a request today, um, to bring the two drivers we had last year back, um, as soon as they're available out of that, uh, Lindbergh office. Um, I've been told that as soon as the Lindbergh depot gets their numbers where they can, they will move them back to our district. Um, I will say that today we saw a significant improvement in the service. We did, um, it is not where we need it to be, not at all. And, um, it isn't acceptable for what our kids deserve, what our families deserve, but there still was a significant difference today, um, and we'll continue to battle through that and, um, do whatever we can. I, you know, I've, I've ridden the bus, Dr. Jameson's ridden the bus, my assistant, Tanya, has ridden the bus. Um, we've thrown a lot of resources at it, um, and we'll continue to do so.
I think, too, when you, when you do the look for the budget, I wanna see, like, bring our pay rate up to the First Student as well, and get back to the budget, because we're gonna get rid of drivers, I want our employees paid equally tonight.
Oh, yeah, yes.
Let's not just look across other schools, I don't care about that, I care about what we're bringing in.
Yeah, we've created two classes of drivers.
Exactly, and that's not gonna be, that's not equitable, that doesn't fit the term.
And do they, you know, do drivers for those companies, that, do they sign non-competes, or can you?
They do sign non-competes.
They do, so, so you can't take them.
Yeah.
He has tried.
Yeah, but, but.
How long is their non-compete?
But, but you're right, that is hard to know, like, when I'm sitting there knowing what we're paying them, and I see our drivers, who are flat-out outperforming.
Yeah, that's not.
The ones we're bringing in, and that's not to say the people we're bringing in are bad people. It's just our drivers are outperforming their drivers significantly.
It's a matter of consistency, it's a matter of being familiar with the crowd, but most importantly, being familiar with our procedures, make sure that the kids are safe.
And relationships with kids, too, so I was able to see the difference, um, shout out to Nate, and, you know, we are all a little quirky around MRH, but, um, joking with the kids and, um, seeing the relationships that are there, and knowing the families when the kids get off the bus, like, you know, that's, that's the difference. And that's what I talked to Dr. Dietrich about when we were talking about the benefits of our individuals driving the bus and being able to hire our own drivers versus contracting out, because it is not there. They don't know the community, the streets, where to go, and our drivers do.
Yeah, I will say.
Shout out to Nate as well, I just have to say that, because that first day was really difficult, and we had a lot of kids waiting, um, and I was trying to keep them, you know, entertained, and it was hot, and they wanted water, and I gave them hugs, and we were waiting on the buses to come. And, you know, Nate was able to run his route, drop off the kids, and come back before the other bus, and I was just like, thank you, thank you, thank you. And I, you know, had to send an email to him, but then also Jesse, um, some kids were displaced, and I have a video of Jesse with all of the preschool kids, like, walking them, I haven't even sent that to you, but walking them on the bus to make sure they, that they actually got back and returned to the ECC safely. So the relationship is just like, they care about our kids, and, you know, we've had some conversations about trying to ensure for the blended rate that we are paying our bus drivers, especially if they have, like, a dual role, um, their, fair share their worth, um, a competitive salary. And so I appreciate all of the efforts that we can make to address the concerns that, you know, are glaring, um, in terms of the pay discrepancy.
Well, and I, and I think, uh, if I may, I think that's another, one of the things that, uh, MRH has done for a long time, um, that maybe isn't working anymore, or it isn't working as well, is that dual role. Uh, you know, like, uh, you know, Nate does a fantastic job with that. Um, that role, you know, he's driving all the time, it kinda fits. But people wanna come, and they either wanna be on our custodial staff, or they wanna be on our driver's staff. They really don't wanna do both, and, uh, it used to be a position that was sought after, and now, um, and maybe that would change. Maybe we would have more custodians that wanna drive if it wasn't just a five dollar, but we've had really amazing staff allow their CDLs to expire.
Absolutely.
Because they say, we're not gonna do that for five dollars. I have to live with this for the rest of my life if I'm in an accident with these babies. These are exact words. Um, it's not worth it for five dollars for me to leave and drive for two hours for ten dollars, it's just not.
Can I ask a couple of other questions of just some of the main points from this? You know, we've talked about the staffing and the, that, the contract part of it, uh, but then there's also been the, the app and the trying to.
But then there's also been the app and the trying to reach the schools when there's a problem with the child, individual child and where they're located. So is it possible to speak to that a little bit? Because I think sometimes a discussion is helpful to people who are trying to understand the system and like, what are the glitches with the app, for example?
Yeah, I can speak to the app. I think if, you know, I'm not a building administrator anymore, so I don't want to answer for them of, you know, how people are calling into a building and getting access to them. But I can speak to the app. We've, we tested it this summer. Anybody who knows our Power School, we have a fake student in there. His name's Pop-Tart. We tested it with Pop-Tart numerous times this summer. It worked. What we're finding out is there is more of an issue with Android phones than Apple. More, I'm sorry, more Apple than I, Android, more issues with Apple. So what they've told us is that typically happens when it's not updated in the App Store. But there's people that are here listening tonight that has updated in the App Store. So then the next step is us making sure in a program we have called Traversa that the student is actually assigned to a route. So we have gone in, assigned that student to a route, taken them out of the route, put them back in the route, taken screenshots, sent it to our vendor. And we have open tech tickets on that and they're trying to work through that issue. But that is not something we expected. There's, there's, there's issues that we've dealt with transportation to start this year. And I'll be honest, as Director of Operations and overseeing transportation, I did not like the fact that Dr. Jameson sent out a letter. I felt that should have came from me. It's my department. I understand she's superintendent. Everything comes from her, but that was my department. Like, that apology should have came to me and I'll publicly say, like, that, that's on my watch and we, we should do better. But when it comes to the app, that was something we tested. And we don't know why that happened. Welcome.
I just have one question about the contract I sent you, but I don't feel clear. There's a third bucket here of time and it's called other and it says time to be paid per hour for meetings?
So if we have a PD training, so like, so if we did, so we did a...
I got you.
Yeah.
So it is actually for like a meeting?
Yes.
You're taking people to, okay, perfect, thank you. Oh, and you mean...
The employee is...
Oh, oh, thank you, thank you, thank you. Got it? Now I have it.
You said they're attending the meetings, right?
Correct.
The driver is in a meeting for training.
Right, they're coming to a professional development, yeah.
Professional development, the driver themselves.
So like last year, we had a training on human trafficking and what bus drivers can do to help with that. We paid them to come to that training.
So if we signed this contract, you said it, it's a non-compete. How long are we tied up with the con, with the contract? Like if the Lindbergh Depot gives us the two drivers back, can we get out of this?
But that's different.
No, I was saying do the drivers who work for First Student have a non-compete?
The contract is with First Student.
Yeah.
But we may work with different depots.
And I think you said the contract has a, we can get out of the contract if you give a certain amount of notice, so. Right, anyone else have any other questions?
So we're still hiring for bus drivers. Anyone who would like to? If there is a barrier to driving...
Because you don't have a training.
Free training.
The training.
Free training.
Free training. And do we have the ability to support folks through like tuition reimbursement for any costs that might be associated with that?
So actually, yeah.
So Jesse Devaney, our Head of Transportation, is a certified trainer. So there is no cost. We do it on, during the workday. We get them out, we train them. You know, Nate's actually helped with some training. He can train under the direction of. But there's no cost other than our regular hourly rate that we'd be paying.
To clarify is that training, you already have your CDL or that's to help you get your CDL?
Both. So what we find is either A, they come to us and they don't have it at all. There's three things. They don't have any training at all. We can take care of that.
And do the CDL part, okay.
Two, they come to us with a CDL and maybe they have passenger endorsement, but they don't have air brake. And all of our buses are air brake, so we have to get them air brake certified. Or three, they come to us and they're completely certified and then we can move them.
Okay, perfect, thank you. All right, any other, any other question? May I get a motion? Can we do that now or gotta add, no, I gotta add it? Sorry, sorry. All right, let's see. Now we are on admin communications. This is Program Evaluation, School Climate by Dr. Amber Phillips and Mr. Estrada.
How are you this evening? How's everybody doing? This is the first time I presented without a PowerPoint.
You can do it.
I know. Death by a PowerPoint. So Dr. Jameson's behest, like, listen, give them the high points, executive summary. So, but, but there is a PowerPoint attached if you are so inclined.
Frankly, I thought you were going to present with the PowerPoint.
I thought about it. But I'm here, I'm here to talk about the climate and culture, work that we're doing in the district. And I did want to say that, and I've been here a minute, you know, it's my 30th, finished my 30th year last year. And I don't think there's been a time where we spent more intentional time talking about climate and culture over the, over the past two years. And I think it's because the community asked us to pay attention to it and we heard you. And Dr. Jameson said, listen, we gotta, we gotta lean in on this. Let's survey folks twice a year. Let's gather some data and do some work. And I think the results are encouraging and, but not because they're dramatic, actually. They're kind of slow growth, which I kind of like. They're not like dramatic improvements, erratic improvements. They're really kind of slow and steady improvement, which I, which I think are positive sides. So we've been doing the climate and culture survey twice a year for the past two years. We're using a tool from the University of Missouri, the PBIS team that we work with closely. It's a free tool. We, it's not the most sophisticated tool, but it's a solid tool. We can really own the data and work with it and kind of really own it and share with our constituents. So it's been a really helpful thing. We studied that pretty closely. The, as I mentioned, the data tables are included in the board agenda. My, my goal is just to highlight some trends, some celebrations and some growth opportunities for the district. Our participation rates, I want to point it out, that's the first thing I wanted to discuss, are a bit, well, they're not a bit. They're lower in the spring, for sure, across all groups. With our students and with our staff and with our families. And most dramatically, we probably had 50% lower participation from our families in the spring survey. And they've been actually one of our strongest participants for the first three cycles. And then our support staff rate was very low this, in the spring, 18% out of the 100 folks that were, that were surveyed. So we did see a dip and that's been kind of consistent, but more dramatic this past spring. So sometime we, we took note of it and we have an action step for that. I think that when we talked to our stakeholders, why the participation rate, rate was lower? Survey fatigue. And if you ever are a consumer, every time you buy something, you get like, hey, give me a review. Like, you're just inundated because it's so easy to create Google surveys, to create surveys for ourselves. And in the spring, there's a lot of competing surveys that are asking some of the same questions. And that really has resulted in some of a, a lower participation rate. So we're mindful about that. But there's some great growth opportunities, some really great things to celebrate. So the staff survey is kind of long. There's 32 questions. And I did a more of a deep dive this year, looked at an item analysis. And of the 32 questions, there has been improvement in 24 of the 32. That thought was pretty remarkable, steady improvement. And three of those have previously been identified as growth areas that are now areas of strength. I thought that was positive. And the elementary student survey, they have 11 questions. And they've had improvement in nine of the 11 over the two years. And one of those was initially identified as a growth opportunity and is now an area of strength. The middle school survey had improvement in all 11 of their questions, item analysis over the two-year period. And three of them that had been identified as growth opportunities are now strengths. High school similarly, seven of the 11 questions have, had showed improvement over those two years, with two of them being kind of gone from a growth opportunity coded as yellow to green strength. So really good stuff. Data sharing, which was one of our lowest scores when we first started doing the survey, which drove Dr. Jameson crazy. How is that possible? But now it's been our most dramatic increase, not because I'm here talking about data and not because it's on our website. I'll tell you why I think that has improved so much is because we talk about climate and culture in all of our spaces. We talk about it with student teams, MTSS teams, climate teams, all over the place. It's, it's kind of been a more normative part of our practice and I think that's why the score has really improved. We have climate teams that pay attention to this now. They set goals based on this data. And it really is reflective in that data sharing being our biggest improvement over the last two years. Some notable things that I'd love to see in terms of stability. The valuing and importance of student voice has been rated high across all four surveys. I love the fact, maybe it's just because I really value the relationship that we have to make with our students. But the students all identify that there's a trust and vulnerability in our building. And I think that's critically important. Are there growth opportunities? Absolutely. But most of our students say, there's someone in my building that I trust that I can go to if I'm in a tough time. And I'm really happy to see that. And our staff, despite some areas of growth, do feel connected to each other. That's a, kind of a strong point in terms of stability over the four years. But there are some growth opportunities. And it was interesting, this is something that the students and staff agreed on. The students say, there are behaviors in our class that sometimes interfere with teaching. And the teachers also said, there are behaviors in class that sometimes interfere with my ability to teach. So there's actually some consensus between our students and teachers on that. That's definitely worth unpacking. One of the things I learned about looking at this data is that the responses, which I must think is kind of interesting, it begs more questions. It's like it kind of piques your curiosity. The data itself doesn't really generate an answer. It just causes you to have more questions and more conversations. So I think that's an area of growth for us to kind of work on and actually kind of presented information to some junior power board members last year and they were intrigued by that as well. There are some concerns in the support staff base that have been kind of lifted up tonight, both in terms of transparency and communication between leadership and recognition for them. And the students also identified that they, that there's, there could be some growth in terms of student recognition for positive behaviors. In terms of next steps, we're doing something different now, this time with the data. It's one thing that's changed. It's like when we first started this survey, I'd get a couple of calls about the data. Now I get them all the time and it's driving me crazy. So like, I'm going to create a data dashboard that has it accessible to all of my constituents. If you need it, here's the link and it'll have, and it'll be all detailed by the questions as well over the two-year period. And I think it's a win-win. It really gives people accessibility to it. And it allows me to, I don't mind getting calls, but I'm like, I gotta get this out there more, more meaningfully. So we're going to do a more detailed item analysis for the building leaders, their, their climate teams, student leadership teams who are interested in network as well, so they can develop action plans. And you'll notice when buildings present their goals, they include climate and culture. That's a regular part of their practice now. We're also going to make sure that there's opportunities to kind of share this growth opportunities with, with our strategic plan, with MTSS team. Our other recommendation is that we're going to go to one survey a year. I know you're disappointed. We talked about it last year, actually. And that's some feedback we got. So we're going to do, we're going to retire the spring survey, but we'll do the survey and probably look for it like late October, early. We did intentionally do a little bit later in the fall, so we kind of got a little bit of movement going. The bus problems will all be solved and then, you know. But also the honeymoon period's over and everyone's excited to be back at school. So it's kind of a good time to take the temperature of folks. We do have a partnership with Skip and also Wash U that it's going to focus on some certified and support staff care. It's a relationship that Dr. Jameson introduced to the district. We met one of their doctoral fellows today. She planned herself here for four hours and is really excited to work with us. So those are some of our recommended next steps. And I will be back here, not in the spring, because we're not going to do a spring survey. We'll be back here next fall. Any questions I can answer for the board? Do you want me to bring back the PowerPoint next time? No.
Oh, you nailed it. You nailed it. Good job, Vince.
So I'm going to let my colleague and friend, Sean, to come up here and talk about the climate or the questions? No. Thank you.
Vince, I think I might stay here. Is that okay? Okay, so my report is the executive summary as well. Like Vince, I did attach a PowerPoint. Oh, habits die hard, so let me see if I can reduce this. Chris, how do I get this out? Oh, please. Did this part go out? Displacing? There, no? I was trying to get, there it is. Get it out of the way. So the executive summary for me is on the stay and exit survey. And we conduct every year stay surveys and exit surveys. And the reason why we do this, it's an opportunity for us to get feedback from our employees. The stay surveys certainly give us an opportunity to understand the factors that contribute to individuals staying. With MRH and the exit surveys, those individuals have made a decision to transition from MRH. And so what are the motivating factors that actually drove their decision and encouraged them to actually leave? So we want to make sure that we're looking at both of those elements to be able to improve our retention rates. And then also in terms of the overall experience for our employees while they're actually working for MRH, we want to make sure that we're increasing that employee satisfaction. And then also we're reducing the departures that we actually see, especially if there are things that we can control. We want people to be able to retire, so some departures are going to be natural. So these surveys are also aligned with the strategic plan for our people. And then they also are a part of the work that we do in order to make sure that we have a positive and inclusive culture. So the key takeaways following Vince's lead here. The strengths of the survey, throughout the surveys, you'll see that there are themes of individuals who stay in the district because of the strong community relationships. And their values are also aligned with the district values or the district receives values. And so that's something that causes them to stay as well. A lot of them certainly talk about those collaborative relationships that they have with their colleagues. The metaphors and the regio approach. So those unique educational programs, our school as museum, all of those things come up as a part of those responses. And then the supportive leadership that they have, not only in the buildings, but at the district level have come up as retention strengths. The challenges that we see, those challenges really center on compensation and compensation specifically with support staff and administrators. And I will say that part of this is the survey data, but whether it's an exit survey or it is a stay survey, we offer the Google Doc with the questions for them to fill out, but there's also an opportunity for them to come and to meet for one-on-one interview. And so a lot of the information is here in the survey, but there's so many conversations that I've had. So there's also lots of interviews that have taken place as well to be able to ascertain the information that I'm sharing with you today. So compensation specifically for administrators, most of our administrators are in that fourth quartile. And so we are really in a position where we're not necessarily competitively paying our administrators. And they really talk about the increased workload and the, and the, the concerns about that work-life balance and the expectations. And so that was a theme that came up. I think the administrators certainly are, you know, excited about the raises for certified staff as well. But I think that there's also this challenge where some of our certified staff or teachers are making, their, their, their compensation is really high to the point where it is really mirroring some of the administrators that we actually have as well. So there's this, this, this struggle with them actually taking on those increased responsibilities and not feeling like they're being compensated for it. And their salary is getting closer to, or in some ways, lower than the teacher compensation. So having those conversations as well with support staff, just to kind of give you more information and feedback on that. In the 22, 23 school year, we raised our minimum wage to $15, a starting salary for $15 an hour as a living wage. I think Katie Kaufman was probably the only board member who was on the board at that time. And we did not scale all the other salaries. And so there was a commitment to try to look at that. The next year through CBTF, we were able to make a support staff salary schedule. And so that was certainly a, a great thing, but since then, we have not gone back. And when you're thinking about that length of service, everyone who was making under $15 an hour were moved up to 15. So if you were making $13 an hour, you were moved up. If you were making $14.90, you were moved up. And so therefore, in terms of the length of service, it didn't really adjust for that. And those are conversations that I'm still having with support staff about, are we ever going to go back and look at that length of service and make those adjustments? Especially given a time when we're having conversations about the length of service for teachers, right? And moving from 10 years to 15 years and then going back and trying to honor those years of service. And so those are some, some of the things that come up specifically. I just wanted to give you those talking points. And then also like the workload, we talked about that. The consistency, discipline practices, that was something that was echoed in Vince's survey as well. And so those concerns come up of how discipline is handled, communication, and then those perceived inequities between employee groups. That came up a lot of different ways, but compensation and expectations were one of the, I would say, the two main themes. When you think about the exit reasons, the departures were due mostly to retirement, relocation, career change, and then that environment or fit. One of the challenges that we had this year is that it was more difficult for individuals to complete the surveys, whether it was the exit surveys or the stay surveys. whether it was the exit surveys or the stay surveys, we had a lower participation rate. So trying to think about how we can increase that, especially with the exit surveys. There are people who actually left our system, and that happens throughout the year, especially if you think about support staff, that we really weren't able to get their feedback as to what those factors were that contributed to them leaving. And certainly those are the things that we really want to make sure that we do have that data to be able to make meaningful change to reduce that in the future. And then opportunities for improvement there was just clearer salary structures for all roles. We currently do not have an administrative salary schedule. So that's something that we would like to get in place for our administrators. We have it for certified staff. Now we have it for support staff. So that next phase is to make sure we do have administrative salary schedules. And then more targeted PD, that's come up a couple of different times for individuals, not within MRH, but more so those external opportunities for individuals to engage in professional development that will help them to continue to learn and grow. That is something that they feel that they are also struggling in terms of when you look at other districts and how they are supporting their colleagues for continual growth, that it is a challenge more so here. And we talked about also that increased transparency in decision-making and then the expanded benefits options. Benefits are increasing, so those are things that we definitely need to make sure that we need to address because the costs of those benefits are certainly providing, you know, some economic factors and stressors for our employees. The cultural concerns there and considerations is that individuals don't necessarily, are reporting that they don't always feel valued and connected. When you look at specific groups, that is coming up around lines of individuals feeling like either they're deemed as an external person, that they're not necessarily MRH in terms of their length of service, they have not been here as long. Or you also see trends and patterns with individuals of color. And this is also, one of the challenges for me is I went back and I looked at the stay and the exit surveys from last year, and I feel like I'm saying the same thing. Okay, got to narrow down. So these are things that have come up before. So those inequities, those racial aggressions, microaggressions, the bias and the favoritism, that came up in the survey. And then I'm going to wrap it up in terms of the key metrics. I added that section because that was something that was included as an additional recommendation for last year. So you can see the averages there and then the recommendations and next steps. I wanted to highlight, there are 14 of them there, but I'm just going to pull out a couple of them because those are going to be intentional efforts that we're really going to try to make sure that we are supporting and making some traction in those areas. So the compensation review, just making sure that we're really looking at the administrator's support staff salaries and looking at those regional comparisons to see how we might be able to compensate our employees better. Let me move it. Sorry. And then also, again, that number 14, which is actually addressing the microaggressions, bias, and ensuring that we actually have a district-wide strategy to address some of the concerns that we actually see come up year after year in terms of these themes. So targeted equity around anti-bias training for staff, including our leaders, and then just having some opportunities for individuals to report and then having responses. So once they are actually reporting these opportunities and these situations to us, having some procedures where we're following up and we're addressing those concerns. What questions might I be able to answer for you? That's a lot to try to go through really quickly.
Earlier you said benefits are increasing. Just to clarify, that's the cost.
The cost of benefits are increasing.
Probably health insurance is my guess.
Yes. For the employee and the family, like, and it's across the board. I think that is the experience, you know, with lots of individuals. We are a part of the CSD Insurance Trust, and so all of the school districts that are a part of the insurance trust certainly are dealing with the same challenges. And because of the tier that we're in, we're in the top tier, so benefits are high.
Anyone else have any questions?
Yeah, I don't know that this is a question, but I just, I also went back and looked at the stay survey from 2223 and continue to struggle with the comments that indicate the racial bias and bullying essentially that seems to be happening. This is not who we say we are here, and yet it seems to be increasingly reported. That is not okay. Leaders of this district, since Dr. Hall was here, have been inviting folks in to do this work of examining their own racial bias and making adjustments. And I am, I am wondering, I'm trying to remain curious while being very frustrated about this. Is there a sense that leaders don't think that the board has their back if we are going to actually have consequences for this kind of behavior? Sorry, you don't need to answer that right now. That's more of a rhetorical question or for future discussion. But again, I am, I am considering contemplating the board's responsibility in this. It feels very uncomfortable to look at the two black women at this table and ask them to fix racism in this district. And so, again, I'm, I'm not sure how to deal with this, but we must, as a district, as a community, deal with this.
I would, I would agree. It's, it's challenging to have these conversations. I think people who know me know me that diversity is really important to me. There's lots of diversity in this room. Diversity is how I live my life with those around me. And it's a data point that I bring to board meetings to try to talk about ensuring that we have a diversified workforce that for, whether they're talking about students of color, whether we're talking about white students, whether they were talking about students of different religious or gender identification, that the kids see people who look like them and that they see people who, you know, represent other identities. I think it's really important. And that is what the world looks like. And I feel like we have a responsibility to all children to ensure that we're preparing them for that. And so there's been lots of efforts that I've tried to do to increase the diversity, including the diversity collaborative hiring event. But I feel like there's a responsibility that we continue to have, not just to recruit and to hire them, but to support them. And, and I think we're struggling in that area, to be quite honest. I have a lot of conversations with people. I give people a lot of tissues. Sometimes I grab my own. And I'm trying to figure out how to fix this problem that is, is, it's glaring and we continue to report it. And there's some things that I think we definitely have to do to address it. And I agree. It's not something that can happen in isolation. One person doesn't own that work, right? One person doesn't have the power to control it. And it's not that, there are lots of people, I think, and lots of things that are creating the system and the experience that they're having. So those people have to be a part of dismantling it as well.
I guess what's confusing to me about what you just said, and again, you know, we don't expect you to fix it or whatever. But if people are coming to you and they're making complaints, I mean, what's being done?
It varies. It depends on what the situation is. They've been, we.
Can I say that, like, I think if we can maybe pull that into the executive session and I can provide more context in regards to.
Oh, no, I'm just saying, like.
Yeah, but I mean, I guess my point is that, I mean, like, you can't make a jerk knock a jerk, right? All you can do is say, here is our zero tolerance for that type of behavior. And.
Well, and I mean, and that's what I'm asking about. Is there, is there a reluctance to write people up for, you know, behaviors? That there's a sense that, like, this isn't going to be taken seriously by the board. Again, not for you. That's a consideration for Josh.
No.
And I do think I agree with Dr. Jameson. Sorry.
No, I was just saying, I agree with Dr. Jameson. They're definitely more specific, so I could share in executive session.
But in speaking, I mean, broadly about the issue, because I agree, you know, and we actually did have a discussion, and I never caught you, Julie and Katie, up, because it's been a long summer. But this is something the board has discussed. Like, there needs to be, this, it does come to us in various ways. So we have had a discussion about how do we address this? Like, how do we understand all of the parts of the problem? And then what can we do to help address it? So I do think that this is good to see, that this is one of the goals for this year because I think that we all share in that goal in working together. So. I, yeah, so I just wanted to say. Does anyone else have any questions? No. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And next, we are at Prop B updates.
And while Dr. Dietrich and Ray are coming up, we did make adjustments to the presentation to align with some of the requests made by the board to look at budget versus actual, and also if the projects are being completed on time. And then the actual budget in general will be the second slide that's included.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to update you. This update will be on the approved projects to date, which is the first slide. We have, we had 10 projects approved. Two and three were combined. We have eight contracts issued, totally just over, well, about 3.1 million. Green means that we're on bud, green means that we're within budget. So the second, the last column is budget variance, and we're showing a slight underrun at this time. Against the 3.1 million, we're about 3,000, almost 4,000 under. That's as of the April 12th date. We had a cutoff, so we updated everything as of the middle of August. Schedule status, green is on schedule and everything is on schedule or complete as of that date. And next month, we'll have more to report. Overall financially, we're tracking the total bond issue. We start with the total project budget. This was prepared by Navigate last fall and was used for the bond issue. Approved today, we just talked about 3 million, 3.1 million. We have future projections. That's the upcoming projects that have not been approved yet, about 6.9 million. Right now, we're under budget. The remaining contingency is 865,000. That is available if needed. It represents about, when you look at contingency, remaining contingent, it really applies to the remaining work to award because the 3 million is contracted, almost done, and any estimate to complete for that is already included. So we've got about 12% left as protection against the future projects. We are saying at this time that all of it will be spent. That's conservative. At this time, we're just getting started. So we're forecasting cost at budget. The, from finance, we got the least payback amount, and that brings us to a total of 3.6, 13.6 million. The bond amount is 15.9. So right now, available for future other projects is about 2.3 million. And right now, though, there's a list of those projects which we will be bringing to the board for future consideration. So it's good news. I'm not going to run through all of this because you've seen it, it's in the package, but it just gives you at a glance how much work has been completed in the last 11 weeks. We had 26 projects and eight contracts, and every school was touched with this project. Over in the right-hand column, besides construction, we are working on other projects. We're starting, we've received qualifications from architects. We'll be coming to you with a recommendation for the architects to be used for designing the next wave of projects for next summer. And we did some survey work, which will lead to additional work, design work. In the package was the photos. The, I think that the highlight of what's done is the field. We, we got the grass down, the sod down. It's growing, and we'll be ready for the first practice and the new school board. Tuck pointing, infrastructure work, the west wall of the high school was completed. The old gym window has been bricked up. The concession building and weight room completely re-tuck pointed the store. And then that's the large rubblestone wall at early childhood, childcare center. It used to have raised joints, which, one, trapped water and was an attractive nuisance to the kids. It's been smoothed. The kids can't climb it anymore and it'll last a lot longer.
ECC teachers love it.
Yeah. Concrete replacement, just a few snapshots of some of the work that was done at each location, especially the exposed aggregate at early childcare. And then the next slide was some of the paving. Parking lots at every facility were touched and have been patched and sealed and restriped. And then we talked about this at approval time, the new ceilings at the, in the middle school, high school. And then that's an inside shot of bricking up the window in the gym, the scaffolding that was used. And finally, this is a small thing, but the steps, at the main steps at the grant, at the stadium bleachers has been resealed along with the west side. And then underneath the overhang, we repaired, repainted the drywall. I was out walking the punch list today, and it was really neat to see that area filled with students. And then security, I saved this for last week. We have installed tech, working with our partner Tech Electronics, we've installed 80 cameras at middle school, high school. Two are left, we're finishing up. 24 at early childhood, they're all online. And then 17 at elementary, two are, we're finishing up. We have to do some tree trimming when they finally end, got to clear the path. But it was very, very, it's been a hectic, crazy 11 weeks, but accomplished much. And all improvements in all the areas that the bond issue approved, infrastructure, security, safety. Any questions?
So will we be ready for homecoming? So will the field will be ready for homecoming?
It will be, it will be ready for the first game on September 18th. We'll be okay to do the first mow on the grass on Monday.
Want to give a shout out one more time to our voters for doing this? Because I think as a, as a parent and a PTO parent, like, the track and field is great, but like, looking at the improvements to the ECC, that little barrier that you put up so that now whenever they wash the cars at the dealership next door, it won't freeze in the winter and ice over the parking lot. That, I saw that. So thank you. Thank you, Dr. Dietrich, for keeping us on track.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have our fiscal year 26 July financial statements.
Back again. I'm still reporting these out, hopefully to have someone in this position very soon. I won't go over revenues. It's pretty evident that our taxpayers, our local donors are what generates and make us go. So thank you to our taxpayers for that. I do want to point out that our operating revenues are at $722,102, which is 2.1% of the budget. It's a decrease over the previous year. Some things contributing to that right now are timing of receipt of revenue. So typically, the timing of the revenue that's being received is a bit delayed. In addition, revenue that has not yet been received, that is crossing over from the previous fiscal year, the majority of that is actually title funds. And part of this also is included is a decrease in the title funds that we receive from the federal government. The expenditures are listed there. The majority of our revenue is from salaries and benefits. And the two other large areas for purchase is purchase services and supplies. Here you will see that we're on par for where we should be from the prior year budget. The long-term debt was paid off with the bond funds. And then capital outlay expenditures are actually transitioned to bond funds as well. And you will see that supplies, expenditures, and purchase services are an increase from, at this point, from last year. The operating fund balance, as you can see, projected for the conclusion of the year is at 48.6%. Just as a note, I do meet with each of the departments as well as the buildings, and we discuss their budgets monthly to look at the projected budget, the expended budget, and the percentage of the funds that are actually. and the percentage of the funds that are actually completed. Just a few other things to highlight as it relates to the budget. We will have a budget amendment coming to the board in October. That concludes the presentation of this month's financials. I welcome any questions you may have. May not have the answers, but I welcome the questions.
Does anyone have any questions? Oh, yeah, thank you. All right. Next, we have Board Communications, calendar of events. Oh, gosh, is that me? School started. Yay, for all parents out there. I, I don't actually see, I know there's probably, does anyone know of any events coming up? I'm sorry. I do know there's some back-to-school nights. I'm guessing, I know the high school has one coming up.
Next week? Curriculum Fridays, next Thursday, I believe.
Thank you, student. Oh, it is, because that's the speech and debate, same night. Okay, yes, next Thursday is curriculum night at the high school. I do know that the district does a great job in keeping us notified in our weekly mailers of all upcoming events. So, let's see. We have the Board Perpetual Calendar. I know that Dr. Jameson and Ms. Norton did some great job updating this based on our meeting a couple months back, where we went through the calendar and sort of pared down our meetings. Did people have a chance to look through it and have any questions or comments about it? I had one question, so I just want to make sure I understood. The budget directive, we, it showed up three times. The first time, I think, is in October. I mean, maybe it showed up four times. So, we, I think we have it on our October meeting to talk about it. So, then, we'll give you some. And then, it comes, it shows on November, both meetings, and then December. I'm wondering if the December one is not, need to be there.
Just given time, we can actually, depending on the pace, to build in some extra time for the board to be able to have conversation. If it's needed for December, we can bring it back.
But the goal would be to have, like, the original one, the one, and then vote on it.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Does any, does anyone else have any other?
I had something mentioned for the partner. It's a kind of odd question, but I know we've redone this, the website for the district, and now I can never find the calendar. So, I was going to be coy and help you with the calendar.
Oh, thank you.
If you were finding it, and it reminded me that I keep getting the 404 not found. And I don't know if it's a Google thing, or they're not there yet, or I haven't learned to navigate it. Is there a trick that you don't know?
That's why I didn't know about it. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ed. I don't speak web very well, but I know that the, the DNS is pointing some people to the wrong URL ASAP FYI. I thought that this was a problem only on the MRH network, but you're, you're talking about outside of the district, right? You're still getting the old.
Yeah, so I've got my laptop and just Googled MRH calendar, and it used to be.
So, you're on this network, but have you tried it at home?
Yes.
Okay. So, yeah. So, about, about one hour ago, I got an email, and yes, I'm checking my email. But about an hour ago, I got an email from Jordan Kirsten, who was our new tech consultant, I guess, with Fantastex. And he wrote, I think we solved the problem. I haven't checked, but maybe he hasn't. But we're working on it. It's a problem, I know, when people are logging in on the MRH network, but outside of the network, people should be getting to the new website.
Well, so, now that I'm, like, looking at the site, I'm seeing that the very top, it says District Calendar, which I'm used to, where I could, like, Google it and it just took me there. Not that I look around the site. So, I'll say now that I'm looking, I can see District Calendar at the top. But I just don't know, so I'll, I'll play around with it now that we think it's fixed.
On, on the last day of August, this won't be a problem, because the old site goes away.
Oh.
Yeah, so, if we can get through the rest of the month, then.
Does anyone else have anything with the perpetual calendar? All right. So, next, we have Board Committees and Meeting Dates. I don't know, did everybody, there was a survey. Sorry, I'm trying to pull this up. And I'm trying to remember, you all didn't at the meeting, I missed, like, assigning people. We still have not done that, is that correct?
So, I think the conversation was just to, for consistency purposes, to keep the same people on and just use the new individuals in the slots that were empty, is what we did.
Was for the Board Committees, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So, you guys did, we did that. Okay. And then, the other was the schools. Which schools we visited? Did we want to switch that up, so people had a different school they could visit? Or we were just going to keep it the same?
So, I just want to admit that I, having a kid in the ECC and at the elementary, gave short shrift to my commitment as the high school liaison, because trying to be at three different buildings, events was not working for me. So, I would prefer to be moved to the ECC as the liaison.
Well, and I was interested in moving to the middle, the elementary school, because I haven't been there in a while. So, I'd kind of like to see what's going on. And I'm, Brian, what were you, what building were you in?
I was the middle school, and I don't have any kids in that anymore. I'd be happy to move to high school preferably, but any building.
I think the idea was to be somewhere where your kids weren't. I think the idea was to be somewhere where your kids weren't.
Yeah, I mean.
But I'm fine with being where your kids are, and I. Because you're right.
I had kids at three of the buildings at the time.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think that was a, a nice thought, but I don't know that it worked out in practice.
Well, and it's easier, if your kid's there, you know more about the stuff going on. So, it's, you're kind of, you're going anyway. Yeah.
So, I have Katie at the ECC, Jeanie at elementary.
Loretta, where you want to go?
I'm down with only one kid, so I can't complain this much about the stretch. So, I will let other people call first, because you've got more schedules you're working on.
The middle school is currently open.
I have a middle schooler now, so that's fine. Sure. I'm trying to learn the building. I was in it today.
I got lost on that, dear middle floor.
Bless you, people who know those half floors.
Yeah, I got, couldn't find my way.
I got lost.
I just stood there. Josh, do you have a preference?
High school, do you want to go to high school?
Okay. You get your choice. I think they're all covered. Well, Brian, were you staying at middle school, or do you want to go somewhere else?
It doesn't matter. I, I would go with high school, but if you need the middle school, I'll stay there.
We still have Trent. Trent may want to do middle school.
He's a free agent.
Yeah, so you get to pick. Well, he gets to sign whatever we give him, because he's not here, so. Although, he did fill out the thing. I think he filled out the, I told him to. We could, all right.
So, we have.
They're all covered.
They're all covered, is that just cross-coverage? Right? Okay, I'll, I'll go elementary.
Okay, there we go.
It'd be nice if we had one more person on the SSD Governing Council. I'm on there. There had been Linda and I both, and we sort of tag teamed. And I, actually, I think even Josh went to one of the meetings when neither Linda or I were available. But there's just, I think, four meetings a year. It's a, and it's.
Julie, I, I might have left her line, and then I had to check. But yeah, so Julie and you?
So, it'd be Julie and I. Okay, great, yeah. And we can just talk about which ones you'd want to attend and which ones don't.
And Trent and I are both still with Joe's place, and I'm fine continuing unless.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, no, I, I enjoy it, so. Unless, Loretta, you, you know. You're good. No, I mean, I'm fine. So, unless you, we can, yeah, we'll just leave it and then. And then, we had, and then Katie, were you MSBA?
I, I was. I'm not going to be able to attend MSBA this year. So, probably someone who's actually attending the October event, because that is like the major delegate assembly, should be the rep.
I'd be available, but I could go as the alternate as well.
Okay. Okay, so we can figure that one, as we go. Okay. All right. I think that was, was that all of them?
Yep.
Get them all? Okay. And then, next, we had two applicants for our committees. I think, let's see, I was just want to see what their first choice. We had a first choice for, for our students. Where do we have, is it on this list, the number of people on each?
Well, it's back on that chart.
Yeah, I want to see, because I think we were sort of, there's a couple that had sort of a lot more than other. Oh, you put her, okay. She's listed on there. Okay.
That, that committee probably looks more full, because both Josh and I are the board reps on it. We have two, you know, administrators on it, and.
But not a ton of community.
But not a ton of community.
Yeah, so that's perfect.
So, I think Amy Peach would be a great addition.
Okay. And then, the second one was Mr. Coriel, and.
For our resources.
He has for our resources first. That's, okay, so I thought that was one that had a ton of community, but does it not, is composed, as opposed to some of the other ones?
I mean, the other thing with for our resources is that, you know, it includes both finance and facilities. I think we've added a few people with fi, with finance.
With finance, but not facilities.
But Matt has, you know, facilities experience, so. I think he would be a great addition there as well.
Are the student members replaced?
They will.
Will they be replaced by new students?
Yes.
Will still be a student in that they.
Yeah. And I think he put only for our resources anyway, it was his only. He put that for all of them, so. I mean, I don't have an issue with that. All right, so.
We don't have to approve the students, right?
No, 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 not the students. They're just appointed through Palboard, I think. Do we have to approve the appointments? Okay, so, all those in favor of appointing Ms. Peach to the, was it for our students?
Yes.
Okay.
And Matt to for our resources.
Okay, that's fine, we can do them together. I mean, I was going to do them separate in case there was a, I thought we should do them separate.
So, I have a motion from Jenny.
Yes, thank you.
Is somebody second from Brian?
Sure, yes, second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, and now I have a motion to appoint Matt Correll to the for our resources committee.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. We did that? Okay, so now, we are on to action items. First up, Megan, a motion to approve the highlight agreement.
Motion to approve the highlight agreement as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And then, Megan, a motion for the transportation collaboration agreement.
Move to approve the transportation collaboration agreement with first student.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, next, Megan, a motion to go into closed session.
I move to enter executive session in accordance with section 610.021, subsections 1, 3, 9, 13, and sections 610.022, otherwise statutes of Missouri and Office 21st, 2025, for the following specific reasons, legal matters, personnel matters.
Second.
Okay, for your roll call.
Mr. Matt?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Matt?
Yes.
Thank you.